Okay, let's do a roll call. Mr. Stenbridge.
Present.
Mr. Valencia.
Present.
Ms. Better Brazza. Mr. Collins.
Present.
Ms. Panado. Ms. Better Brazza. Looks like we need to give it a minute. Since we're missing two people. All right, Ms. Panado and Ms. Better Brazza. Yay, well, maybe someone should reach out to both of them. All right, apologies to our other members. Let's see what's going on. I thought you gave us some to lengthen and it might be some folks confused. In the meantime, if anyone else in the... If you're in the attendee section right now and you need to be elevated to a panelist, please raise your hand. We just want to make sure folks are in the right spot before we get started. And if you are presenting, oh, I see you're presenting at some point to be elevated to a panelist, please feel free to raise your hand or send a message in the chat. Okay, well, we have Ms. Panado back. We're just doing a roll call. Ms. Panado?
Uh, present.
Okay, well, I'm just, there we go. Can we, Ms. Better Brazza?
Present.
Okay, let's proceed, Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes, Madam Chair, moving on to the rediscussion scheduled for 11:30. Case BOA 1533784 with the address of 152 Washington Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Marantzi. I'm the attorney for business. Address of 350 West Broadway. Madam Chair, members, this matter was deferred in order to allow for it to be re-advertising. I represent Tim Lay and Kwong Tong who are proposing a change of occupancy of the building in 152 Washington Street in Brighton. Form a two-family, not a three-family dwelling in conjunction with complete renovation of the building. This will occur through an interior reconfiguration of the building with no expansions or additions to the structure. This is a proposed addition, there is a proposed addition of living space not to include any bedrooms as well as three storage units to the basement level of the building as noted on Sheet A1, which follows. Successfully, Sheet A2 shows first-floor conditions where an existing two-bedroom unit would be renovated into a three-bedroom unit of 1,168 square feet. Sheet A3 shows the second floor with the existing two-bedroom unit also will be renovated into a three-bedroom unit of 1,144 square feet. Sheet A4 shows the existing third-floor plan where there are currently four bedrooms associated with Unit 2. This would become the third unit of the building, a three-bedroom unit of 1,202 square feet. There will be new exterior finished materials as well as minor changes to doors and windows as depicted on the elevation sheets. With respect to zoning, this is a 2F5,000 zoning sub-district, meaning the proposed three-family use requires a variance. As the BPDA recommendation notes, this section of Washington Street is characterized by a mix of two-family, three-family, and multifamily dwellings, making the proposed use consistent with neighborhood conditions. This violation is cited twice on the refusal letter, which is clearly an oversight by ISD. There is a violation for insufficient off-street parking. The building does have an existing curb cut and driveway with four parking spaces in the rear, but under Article 51, five parking spaces are required for three units. Finally, there is cited violation for insufficient lot frontage. I believe this violation to be cited in error since this is not proposed new construction, which would trigger lot width and frontage requirements, nor is there a frontage requirement, different frontage requirement under the code for three-family dwelling as opposed to a two-family dwelling. This fact is also noted in the BPDA recommendation. With that, Madam Chair, I'll pause and take any questions that board members may have.
Thank you, Mr. Marantzi. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Uh, yes. Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Frank Mendoza, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted a Butters meeting for this project on November 6, 2023. We did not have any Butters in attendance. We did have one attendee from the larger Brighton neighborhood and one attendee from the city councillor's office of D9. But we didn't hear any concerns or any questions from any Butters. The applicant did go before the Brighton Nelson Improvement Association. Their zoning chair, Annabella Gomes, should be going to testify to that. Their stance, that said, we'd like to defer to the judgment of the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
Well.
Yes, sir.
My name is Steve Gunsberg. I own a home in 79 Clay Moss Road, which is diagonally behind this proposed switch from two-family to three-family house. Three-family house. I want to go on record to say I am opposed, I am opposed to this this allowance. I think the, as it is a parking lot, the area is very tight. Across from this unit, across from this house on Washington Street, they've converted the monastery into hundreds of apartment units, which do have parking, but because they charge for parking, the parking has become nearly unavailable. Adding bedrooms to these apartments will add more people and additionally add more cars. There is inadequate parking as it is, and I am opposed to adding any more
You.
particular unit should be allowed to be non-conforming, three-family. But most of the homes in the area are two-family conforming.
Thank you. Jessica, are there any other raised hands?
I have no raised, additional raised hands.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
I'm going to give a proposal for a watch.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
I can tell it's ready.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Thank you.
Why would you do that?
Next, we have case BOA 1547345 with the address of 1457 BFW Parkway. This is a cannabis case. Would the applicant and/or their representative, please explain?
Can you raise your hand if you're on for this proposal?
Mr. Byron, are you on for this case? Mr. Byron, are you on for this case, 1457 BFW Parkway?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Uh, we can now. Please proceed.
Um, Dr. Shalair, are you going to proceed?
Trying to unmute. I don't know if you can hear me, though.
We can, ma'am.
Okay, good, good. Hi, my name is Shalair Armstrong. Thank you, Madam Chair, and other members of the board for having us today. We are proposing a cannabis delivery and manufacturing facility located at 1457 BFW Parkway. The reason that we're coming before the board today is because we are in breach of the buffer zone, which is .5, so we had a traffic study done to show the path from our facility to the next facility, and that is around an immovable object, which is a median in the middle. So when you go around it, you can see the dotted lines from our facility to theirs, and that's .42, so that's what we're here for.
Oh, I'll just step in. We're asking for a variance.
Okay, questions from the board? Hearing none.
I have no, I have a note. Oh, I'm sorry. I misread the note. No further questions.
Okay, thank you. With that, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would defer to the judgment of this board. ONS hosted a community meeting where the applicant was able to address questions that community members had, and now their attendees were in support of the proposal. They went on to meet with the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council, I believe, twice, before the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council offered their support for this proposal. With that, I'll refer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you raise your hands?
Okay, all right. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Next, we have case BOA 155.
The withdrawals and deferrals?
Yes, we will ask, um, we will ask for any withdrawals or deferrals from the 1 o'clock hour. Hearing, hearing no requests for withdrawals from the 1 o'clock hour or withdrawals or deferrals, we'll move on back to 11:30 for case BOA 1550107 with the address of 451 East 7th Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz, Adam Zimmaranti, with the business address of 168 H Street, first floor, South Boston. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, and joining me today also is the project architect, Eric Zacherson. This is a proposal to change the occupancy from a three-family dwelling to a four-family dwelling by renovating the basement into a two-bedroom unit. The front of the basement is at grade, but gradually slopes down to a full walkout in the rear. Proposed design is staying within the existing footprint of the entire building, and all renovations of the property will be interior for this unit. Proposal is located within an MFR sub-district, and the property consists of approximately 1,755 square feet, which creates two violations, one for lot size and additional lot size. Majority of the lots along East 7th Street are non-conforming with both lot size and additional lot area purge dwelling unit. If we could go to, oh, perfect, this is page three, we could leave it right here. The basement unit will consist of a two-bedroom, one bathroom, and an open-concept kitchen. The existing entranceway in the rear yard will be relocated and replaced with an egress window. There will also be another egress window located in the rear. Also, there are a new entrance from an interior stairway on the main foyer as well as the entrance, a new main entrance in the rear of the property as well. We have additional violations for FARs excessive, the proposed FARs are 2.2 as we are capturing the basement space, and a 2.0 is what is compliant. There was an administrative error on the plans relating to the proposed FAR. The existing square footage is exactly 2,952 square feet, and with the addition of 910 square feet for the, for the basement unit of habitable basement space amounts to 3,862, which equates to a 2.2 proposed FAR. And the last violation that we do have is insufficient parking required to provide 1.5 parking spaces per new unit of housing, but unfortunately, this property doesn't have any ability to offer parking on site. However, it is a two-minute walk to the bus stop and is aligned with the Boston Transportation Department's Parking Maximum Ratio Guidelines of 2020. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to the board for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lydia Plasky with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. And a Butters meeting was hosted on January 10. During that time, no concerns were voiced. Our office received one letter of opposition in relation to scarcity of on-street parking. Aside from that, our office is unaware of any additional concerns with this proposal. We would like to defer to the judgment of the board at this time. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, and members of the board. This is Laura speaking from Coastal Flynn's office. At this moment, Coastal Flynn would like to go on record and support based on a good community process. Coastal Flynn respectfully request that the proponent work closely with the neighbors at the civic group on any quality of life issues that may arise during the construction phase. Thank you.
You? Savitri? Savitri, would you like to give testimony? I have no additional raised hands. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I'm motioning for a BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Valencia, uh, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, the next case has been deferred, so we'll move on to case BOA 1486245 with the address of 1260 Boylston Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain to us?
Can you raise your hand if you're on for this proposal? You see any raised hands?
I do not.
Okay, then I say we keep going and come back if they show up.
Uh, we'll be going to the 1 p.m. after this?
Yep.
Okay, then with that, we go to the 1 p.m. hearing, and we'll ask for case BOA 1565948 with the address of 196 Beach Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present for this case, would they, would you explain to the board?
Uh, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Lee Ulgeni on behalf of the applicant, Tony Ferraro, who is with me today. Uh, 196 Beach Street in Rosendale, the zoning in this neighborhood is one-family, 6,000, and the lot size is 5,984 square feet. This proposal is to build a single-family home with four beds, two and a half baths, approximately 2,500 square feet on what is now a vacant lot. The dwelling will include a garage that will hold two cars. The new building will fit seamlessly with the existing neighborhood context in this one-family, 6,000 sub-district. The parcel is abutted by, on three sides, by three-story, single-family dwellings. The neighborhood at large is comprised of predominantly single-family homes as well. The project has undergone an extensive community process with the proponent meeting with the Butters and neighborhood residents twice privately, allowing them to give him input and shape the project in what is being presented to the board today. This includes accommodating the neighbors' request that the building's front yard setback align with the existing home at 200 Beach Street. It's worth noting that initially, there was no violation for existing building conformity. Uh, this was done at the request of the immediate Butters. Uh, the proponent has held a formal Butters meeting with ONS, where the project's final form was well-received and had unanimous support from all participants. And all this lot is 18 feet short of the 6,000 square feet requirement, and only two and a half feet short on width. And this, again, is consistent with many other properties in this neighborhood. In addition to the support of the ONS meeting, we also submitted eight letters of support from the immediate Butters. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information, the community process, ONS hosted a Butters meeting on February 22. Those in attendance were appreciative of the work that the applicant had done prior to that meeting, with meeting with many of Butters and sitting down to discuss what they would like to see out of the project. Residents expressed admiration for the landscaping plan as well as the orientation of the building on the plot of land itself after numerous conversations. Uh, we're unaware of any concerns at this time, and we'd like to defer to the judgment of this board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge? Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Next, we have case BOA 1540888 with the address of 53 to 57 Harvard Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain the case to the board, please?
Uh, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Matt Mueller. Hugh Architecture, located at 53H Harvard Street. Uh, we are the owners and representative, the advocate of the neighboring property at 53H Harvard Street. Um, this is a very simple project. Basically, we own the building at 53H adjacent to 53, to 57, and their land wraps around behind us. Uh, we have a small architecture office on the first floor, and we are just proposing to purchase that little, approximately 1,200 square feet piece of land behind the property just to use as open green space and garden space.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office would defer to the judgment of this board. Uh, a Butters meeting was held on February 28. Um, there was no one in attendance. Uh, we weren't aware of any concerns at this time. I understand they reached out to the local civic association, which was supportive of this proposal. Uh, with that, I'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, oh, I'm sorry, Brian, go ahead.
Just to clarify, is this, um, the project for, uh...
This is 53 to 57 Harvard Street. They're just purchasing in a budding, small piece of land.
Yes, our office would like to offer support to this project as they met with the civic and also gotten the support.
Thank you. Uh, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion approved for BPDA designer view.
May I have a second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, this is Sam. I apologize. For the record, would we be able to have what office Brian is from and representing?
Uh, sure. Brian, can you state your affiliation?
Absolutely. My apologies. I was trying to figure out. But, um, my name is Ayemi Deulumuyo from the Office of City Council, Brian Morell.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
All right.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1575505 with the address of 151 Tomson Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain to the board, please?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small of the business address of 51 Dobson Road. And today, we're here seeking relief to change the legal occupancy of the building from a two-family dwelling to four residential units. Here, the zoning sub-district is a 3F4,000. Our lot size is 7,730 square feet, and the violations are as follows. With regard to open space, we are required for 615 per unit. We have 633 per unit. Um, it's a forbidden use because it's a 3F district, and we are proposing four residential units. The FAR, the required FAR is 0.8, and we are proposing 0.9. And our side yard, um, violation is a 10-foot requirement and an 8-foot proposed, and that's a pre-existing, non-conforming use. Madam Chair, all of the, the work being done here is interior to the building. The units will consist of two two-bedroom, one and a half bath at 1,450 square feet, and two three-bedroom, three-bath at 1,550 square feet. Madam Chair, we are proposing living space in the basement, and I will tell you that the basement floor-to-ceiling height is 8 foot 2 inches, um, and we are proposing, proposing to sprinkle a building. If you could scroll down, Madam Ambassador, to the rear, um, elevations plan, you can see that a good portion of, go down one more, yeah, right there's good. Up, up one, right there. A good, yeah, if you zoom out a little bit more so we can get the bottom two. A good portion of the, um, the lower level is above grade or, um, it exposes out into the rear, rear yard and, and then is above the grade of the, of the house. Um, with that, I'll stop, and we can take any questions that board members may have.
Thank you, Mr. Small. Any questions from the board? May I have a public testimony?
Uh, is, wait, is this a walkout basement?
Yes, in the rear, it is walkout.
That's a door there?
Yes, it is.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information, the community process, and a Butters meeting was held on November 20. That went well. Um, the applicant, they went on to meet with the Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association, which offered their support to this proposal. Uh, with that, I'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Yamidah? Are you looking at your, oh, are you looking at your testimony, are you? Put his hand down, thank you. Oh, are you speaking?
No, I apologize. I think my hand was lifted over from the last case.
Thank you. Any, uh, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Have a good day.
Next, we have case BOA 1538643 with the address of 40 Democ Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain, please?
Yes, Madam Chair and board members. My name is Sam Dennis, and I'm representing the Dimic Center. They have a, um, an old Victorian building that they have been, uh, they're requesting a, um, clinical use, which is allowable use, which condition- clinical use, which is an allowable use, or it's conditional on your um agreement. Um, they have been using this building as a clinical building recently. It has a temporary occupancy, but um ISD has been leaning on us to get it formalized as a permanent occupancy, and we're hoping that you'll agree that that's uh reasonable.
Yeah, any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office would defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. ONS had an abutters meeting on January 16th. Uh, the applicant was able to answer questions that neighbors had. Uh, the applicant then went on to meet with the Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association, as well as the Eggleston Square Neighborhood Association. Uh, both vocalized strong support uh to granting this variance as they believe it provides an important community service by allowing the continued and expanded service to the treatment of substance abuse. Uh, with that, we defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
You? Um, Madam Chair, I have no raised hands. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Next, we have case BOA 154-7905 with the address of 120 Brookline Avenue. This is, this is a cannabis case. If the applicant and the, and their, and/or their representative would explain, please?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, my name is Attorney Alexis Kichuk. Uh, my address is 1 State Street, Boston, Mass. And I am here with the uh management team of Fenway Cannabis Company. I realize that everybody on this Zoom, uh especially uh the board members, have been seeing a lot of proposals today, and it's been a long day. This is a long presentation, but I can probably quickly summarize this. 120 Brookline Avenue was one of the originally cited cannabis establishments in the city of Boston back in 2019. It has been open uh for over three years. Uh, the current situation before us is because the ownership at 120 Brookline Avenue is changing. Um, so the old owners are turning off the light, and the new owners are turning it on. Uh, the new ownership team is a Massachusetts-based cannabis company. They are experienced operators. They were approved by the CCC for this change of ownership in November of 2023. But because cannabis is such a, a new industry, um we've re-initiated the process, not only with the Boston Cannabis Board, but also with inspectional services. Um, there will be no significant changes proposed for this site. District City Councilor Durkin has uh submitted a letter of support for this proposal, as have abutting businesses. Uh, and there was no objections raised during the public community meeting nor before the Boston Cannabis Board. Happy to discuss in more specifics, but there's just a wealth of information regarding security cameras um and staffing and other models that have already come before this board. Generally, our presentation for you is just a new applicant and company. And again, they have passed background checks with the state and are already operating in other parts of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Thank you. You, so just to confirm, no logo proviso, correct?
No, so just remove the proviso that says for this applicant only?
Okay, thank you, that's what I asked.
Okay.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office would defer to the judgment of this board. As you heard from the applicant's representation, uh there was lengthy community outreach. We're unaware of any concerns at this time, with that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands? Madam Chair, I have no raised. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you for your service.
Next, we have case BOA 157-5468 with the address of 350, 352 Hanover Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago &amp; Toscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. Uh, here on behalf of Jennifer Matarazzo, the owner of Locali Restaurant in the North End. Uh, the proposal before you was to change the occupancy, and you're looking at the building, existing conditions uh in this picture here at 350 and 352 Hanover Street uh from two apartments, a barber shop and existing pizza shop, uh that is what Locali is now, to two apartments and full restaurant, uh and expanding the restaurant to uh at 352 Hanover Street. Well, it's a pretty straightforward proposal. Uh, this falls within Hanover Community Commercial District, um so it is within a commercial corridor. Um, and as part of the proposal, Locali uh is an existing pizzeria um and does have uh beer wine and cordials. They are looking to expand their seating to small space of 600 square feet and change, and this would give them about 1,300 square feet it would add if we go to the uh further plans. Um, Madam Ambassador, yeah, right here is perfect. Um, as you can see, there would be a, a connection between the walls. There was an existing barber shop on the left uh commercial space, and that would be converted uh to give them more space. It would have additional seating, a bar area, some high tops, a few tables, and it would give them a widened kitchen area for food preparation, and also um to put the bathrooms both on one side, um and really would allow them to expand their, their business, which has been growing over the last 10 years. Um, there were two zoning uh violations that were cited. It's non-conforming use change because um we would be extending an existing non-conforming use, and then restaurant with takeout on the first story is conditional. Um, and uh with that, I can pause and answer any questions that the board may have. All of the work would be interior work aside from um windows and doors.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office would defer to the judgment of this board. Uh, ONS hosted an abutters meeting on February 21st. Uh, the applicant then went on to meet with New RUG and New NIC, the two active civic groups in the area. Uh, both voted to support this proposal. With that, we defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I have no raised hands. Thank you. Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are we circling back to 1260 Boston?
Uh, Madam Chair, we reached out to the applicant, uh via phone and email. We haven't heard anything back from them yet.
Okay, so uh, may I have a motion to, uh, I think, is it deny without prejudice, Samantha, that makes sense?
You could, you could either way, Madam Chair. The choice is up to you and the board.
I will leave it up to the person who makes the motion. May I have a motion?
Motion to deny without prejudice.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone? Yes.